Meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, February 18th. Please stand for our invocation led by Pastor Gregory A. West and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Can I get you to bow your heads as I pray? Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings for substance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and honor and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor for the various levels of city officials and in particular for this Assembly Council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicted interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in our around, in and around our beloved city of Mobile. It is in your most blessed name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Blessings.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and delirious, just as far off.
Here.
Vice President Small.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're certainly glad to see you every one of you and the rules for this particular meeting are as follows. First, we would ask that you turn off or silence all of your electronic devices. Any person to, any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resi-
The resident-
Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution ordinance appeal a public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must clearly state his or her name and address for the record. Any person desiring to address the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk's office on the Thursday preceding the Tuesday in which you'd like to speak. You must do so by 2:00 P.M. The subject that he or she wishes to address must be pertinent to City of Mobile business. Any person who hadn't given that proper notice to the clerk's office won't be allowed to address the council. Speakers are granted five minutes for their presentation. A bell will sound to indicate the end of four minutes. Subsequently, another bell will sound after the ending of that sixty seconds, letting you know that all of your time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council member. All of your statements and inquiries ought to be made to myself, our service chair, and if there is any council member who wishes to respond, they will have that opportunity. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and/or public outcry allowed. Those are our rules and we're certainly appreciative of your interest in our municipal government.
Approval of minutes of February 11th. So moved.
Certainly. Probably moved and seconded in the discussion. If not all in favor, aye opposed, minutes are approved. Great job as always.
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see everybody this morning. Ms. Anton, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good.
All right.
Good, good to see you this morning up there. We have several awards that are going to be presented this morning. We have an Officer of the Month, Firefighter of the Month, and two crews from Public Works which will be recognized. So we'll start with Chief Batiste. If you will present the award to the Officer of the Month.
To our mayor, to the Chair of the City Council and, City Council in general, to all assembly today, it gives me great pleasure to stand here before you this morning to acknowledge the Officer of the Month for the Mobile Police Department. Officer Nora Anderson has rendered a service to the city which deserves special recognition. On January 6th, he initiated a traffic stop at Clubhouse Road and Gil Road after seeing a vehicle with illegal lights. Upon approaching the vehicle, he observed a handgun behind the passenger seat. The subject was arrested for no pistol permit and cited for illegal lights. The next day, he initiated a traffic stop and discovered the driver did not have a license. One subject in the backseat also gave a false name. Upon learning the passenger's name, he found the subject was forbidden to possess a firearm and had a rifle with a box of ammunition in the backseat. The passenger was arrested on the warrant. Over the course of the next week, Officer Anderson would initiate three more traffic stops where he arrested a drunk driver possessing crack cocaine and later a large amount of marijuana and other paraphernalia. On the 31st, Officer Anderson initiated pursuit following a carjacking on DIP. The subject bailed, which led to a foot pursuit. Officer Anderson apprehended the subject who was charged with robbery, kidnapping, rape, sodomy, persons forbidden to possess a firearm, and attempting to elude. His initiative, enthusiasm, and excellence in the overall performance of his duties show a proactive police style that is an asset to all Mobiians. Now therefore, we are pleased to award this certificate of recognition as Officer, as Officer of the Month for January 2020.
I'd like to start off with thanking God for this opportunity. I wouldn't be able to do this job if it was not for him. I'd like to say thank you to all the city officials making Mobile the best place to work. I look forward to many more years of service with the City of Mobile. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Chief Sealy.
Good morning.
This morning, I want to, first of all, I want to thank you, the Council and the Administration for providing this program for us to recognize our firefighters. It's, it's an honor for us to be able to do that. I wish I could bring them all down and introduce them to you, but for February, our Firefighter of the Month is Captain Mike Chestang. Captain Chestang, I've known personally for his nineteen years that he's been on here and I can tell you he's had a stellar career and I look forward to many, many more years of his leadership within our department. He's currently a captain over at Tolmanville Station, Station 14, and Captain Chestang is a fourth generation firefighter. That goes back to the 1940s. In fact, in fact, his father, Mike Chestang, who I only knew as captain while I was coming up in the department, is here. Captain Chestang, stand up for him. Currently, over the last three to four years, Captain Chestang and his crew has been involved and they volunteered their time to go down to LaFlore High School to teach at the public safety course. And so they, over that course of time, they have, they have taught fire, fire instruction to over three hundred students over there and not only teaching them kind of what we do, but letting them know that there's a path that's available for them for our course should they choose that. So with all that being said, I can't wait to see what, where his future takes and I challenge him to get the books. I want to see him get promoted. But February Firefighter of the Month, Captain Mike Chestang.
I might add that having an opportunity to visit with him and his wife, I found out that they have a son and a daughter. We were curious about a fifth generation coming along and it appears that maybe the daughter, who's now about sixteen, but there may be a chance that we'll have a fifth generation, which we're strongly encouraging. Jim Delampa, are you going to make this next presentation?
Yep.
Okay, you and Jeff.
Good morning.
As, as you all know, we're in probably the busiest month for our public service workers here with Mardi Gras upon us. A lot of extra effort and time is going in by this, these crews to keep the city looking as best as it can every night after our parades and on the weekends, a lot of overtime, a lot of hard work. And today, we just want to have Jeff highlight just a couple of our folks. We don't have the full crew. We had a few that couldn't make it, some are, you know, recovering after working late nights from parades, but we have a few of our folks we want to recognize.
Jeff.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Jeff Dees, I'm supervisor over the sanitation in the garbage, trash department. These two gentlemen both work in the trash department. It says Ronnie Griffith, I'm sorry. Ronnie Dresser, he's been with us not quite two years. He's Operator Three, works on the, operates the boom, pick up the trash in the trash department, in the trash truck. This is his driver, Dennis Hudson. He just had his eleventh anniversary on the fourteenth, so they're both, these both great guys. They work hard and do a good job for us, which the other ones could have been here, but they couldn't make it. And I also like to say thank you for all the men and women in our department for the good job that they do. Thank y'all.
Jeff, do me a favor and pass this word back down through all the crews, but this past weekend, I had out of town guests that came to the parade on Friday night and they took maybe just a thirty second video, fifteen second video of the parade. They had two minutes of the cleanup crew. They said by far that was the most exciting part of the parade. I told them just don't get in the way of them and you'll be all right. Tell them it does not go unnoticed of the job that they do. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank y'all. Good day.
Okay, this afternoon at three o'clock, Archeneek Kid will be hosting a supplier diversity conversation, three o'clock here, no, I guess it's in the atrium, actually in the atrium. Anybody, minority owned business, women owned business, please show up. We're trying to make it easier for you to understand how to do business with the city and I can assure you, you will leave that gathering better informed and better equipped to secure contracts with us and so we embrace that. We have made tremendous strides in the last four years, I would say especially under Archeneek's leadership and we look forward to continuing to make progress. Mardi Gras is in full swing. The next seven days, strap it on, you know. It's a lot of fun. I look forward to this Friday, the USS McFail will be, McFall will be coming into port. I don't think I need to say this, but almost a hundred percent of the time, the sailors that are here from Mardi Gras are blown away by the reception they receive from all Mobiians. And I would just like to encourage all of us to put our hand out and our best foot forward in welcoming them here and thanking them for their service. This year, we have done something a little bit different in an effort to help with the litter and cleanup. We have a hundred garbage cans scattered around downtown on the parade routes and we do find that a lot of people are picking up trash, putting it in the garbage can so that our crews don't have to do that, so we're tremendously grateful for that. So anyway, everybody have a great and safe Mardi Gras. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Morning, Mr. President, City Council.
David Clark with Visit Mobile. Every year, our team works hard with our stakeholders to put our visitors' destination guide together and I'm going to introduce our wonderful Director of Marketing and Communications, Tara Zeman, to tell you just a little bit of a snapshot about it. Tara?
Thank you. Good morning. We at Visit Mobile are thrilled to announce the arrival of our 2020 Destination Guide that is in front of you. We print two hundred thousand copies and it is the most comprehensive collection of Mobile visitor information throughout the entire region. The team wanted to do something different this year. We took three guides and combined, and combined it into one-to-one larger magazine-style guide that's filled with stories and unique experiences visitors can have in Mobile. Another first you'll see is a removable food and drink guide that visitors can tear out, fold it, and keep it in their purse and their back pocket and travel with them around our city. The Destination Guide is distributed each year to welcome centers, rest areas across the southeast, hotels, restaurants, cruisers, meeting planners, travel agents, bloggers, and the list goes on and on, including our two international reps in Germany and the U.K. It's truly a labor of love to produce this annual guide, which we call in our office our love letter to Mobile. I can't stand before you without saying thank you to a special, to a couple of special people. Oliver Dorgan with Visit Mobile, whose patience and creativity and his talents really made this guide come to life. Meredith Turncliff, Taloria Crenshaw, and Emily Gonzalez, who are here today, were invaluable to this six-month process. It takes a village and I'm a little biased, but I think we have the best village and that includes you all sitting up there and to my left and my right. I thank you for everything that you do for our great city. It's because of what you do that allows us to do what we get to do and I say get to intentionally because we have the best job and we just get to tell the world about the most, about the greatest city, Mobile, Alabama. Thank you guys so much.
All right. Thank you.
Margot Gilbert and Kent Blackington.
Good morning and happy Mardi Gras.
Good morning.
Kent Blackington, President of Mobile Area Lodging Association, and Margot Gilbert, who's the Vice President of the Lodging Association as well. We're just here today to give you an update on this longstanding initiative of the Lodging Association to form a tourism improvement district in the City of Mobile. We have, it's, it's actually been seven years since this idea has been floated out there, all the way back to Al Hutchinson. I checked that on an email before this meeting, but we stand before you today in the same position we were about two years ago, where we have petitioned all the hotels to support this initiative and then we had some state language, some language by this, this council that needed to be changed in the original state statute because it didn't quite match the methodology of the assessment of what we were doing. So we spent last spring in Montgomery getting that changed at a state level, which we did get done, and then we have to repetition all the hotels for the support because of the new language. So we are here today with more than enough support needed to move this thing forward. We actually have more support than we did the last time we were here. So as an industry, we have a ton of support to move this on. Really, at this point, we hope to get the public notice sometime this week for the public hearing and then we hope to be back in front of this council sometime March 17th around to move, move this ordinance forward and collections probably may start around maybe June 1st, June 1st at the latest. So we appreciate everybody's support over the years. I know we've met with everybody individually and I know it's a longstanding thing, but we have persevered and we are here again, so this is a perfect example of public-private partnership to help our industry throughout the city and just bring more tourism and more business to our city. So we just want to give everybody the update because it's been a little while, but we're in a good spot and we're moving forward at this point. Does anybody, yes?
I have a question. So you've gotten everything you need from the state?
Yeah, that's done. We got the state statute changed last legislative session.
So once you get all these details straightened out, you're going to come back and put an ordinance in front of us and when we pass that, you'll be all set to go.
That's correct.
Is that right?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thanks.
We look forward to it. Are there any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate the update and appreciate all of yours hard work to really get Mobile out there with all of the individuals who are here with Visit Mobile, where you all stand. Let's give them a big round. Thank you. Thank you so much. We appreciate all of, all of yours efforts.
Adoption of the agenda.
Second.
This motion is second? Any discussion? If not all in favor, aye opposed?
We have requests for a wave of the noise ordinance of March 19th in Cathedral Square, February 23rd on Dolphin Street, and February 22nd on Montgomery Street.
So moved. Second.
We probably moved and seconded in the discussion. If not all in favor, aye opposed?
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Antonio Maven.
My name is Antoni Maven. I stay at 1059 Beverlydale Circle West, Mobile, Alabama, 366006. I'm here today as the president and business agent and also a citizen of Mobile with our concern pertaining to the wave transit system. Some of you guys may have received, if you didn't receive it, whatever's a petition sent out to you guys pertaining to the wave transit and the issues that we are having out there with our general manager. And some of the things that we're having is really just awful, especially when it does to the, the environment and for us the workers and also in connection with the customer service as far as us picking up our daily passengers because people are calling in and people are taking off because of these type of acts that we are having to deal with on a daily basis. As the president and business agent of Local 77, it is my responsibility to protect the interests of the members regarding the working conditions. Although the grievance procedure and the CBA does not allow for some protection, resolution regarding our rights and concerns at the wave, these are different natures and may, may cause some states and local issues in nature. My members are here today to express their concerns and this, this disappointment with the general manager at the wave. I have personally issues with the general manager because I think he is intimidating the union ability to represent our members as well as involve himself in union business. Mrs. Dash does not respect me or the representative of my members. He didn't, he do, he, he did weak, I'm sorry, he did, he did not probably, he, he don't because if he did, he would probably resolve some of these issues. I have to put my members in the best position to have their issues heard, addressed, and resolved. Thank you, Dash, to let it manifest into something bigger, but I want to get through some of this. The council and the mayor are responsible for the wave transit and its general manager, so here we are. We are looking forward to a private forum to express ourselves and a properly member. We thank you today for your time and attention to this matter.
Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson.
Ms. Simpson, have, have you been contacted by this group regarding any grievances?
Mr. President, I, I can answer that. The contact that we've received, counselor, is in the form of receipt of the petition that Mr. Maven referred to. And I, I want to say, we, we take this matter very seriously. The, the employees who are primarily drivers and mechanics and the support personnel for the wave are very important to our bus service system. I will tell you, our, we are pleased with the improvements that have taken place since First Transit has been here. We have a 24% increase in the number of riders who are, who are able to, to use the bus. Looking at the last three months compared to the same three months from last year, ridership is up. Accidents are way down. Safety and training are being concentrated on by First Transit. That said, we take Mr. Maven's comments very seriously. I, I know Mr. Maven, I served with him on the pension board for the, for the transit workers. I know him to be very attentive to his members' concerns and responsible in his, representation of his members. The matters that we believe are contained in the petition and as Mr. Maven has talked to us about today are their personnel matters. We believe that those matters are also the subject of three separate grievances that the union has filed in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement between the union and First Transit. The city is not a party to that, but we're, we're aware of the grievance process. We trust that the process will, will be attended to appropriately by First Transit and by the union and look forward to a conclusion to those matters, those who have just begun. The city also will be paying attention to these matters and will be looking into them. I do want to emphasize that the collective bargaining agreement must be respected and that the grievance process is the way for these matters to, to be properly discussed and, and a conclusion reached. So we are concerned, we're paying attention, we'll be looking into it, but we do respect the grievance process.
Thank you, Mr. West. The reason I ask the mayor because I wanted you all to-
Get in your mic.
I want to make sure you all knew the protocol. Once the council voted, voted on the contract for First Transit, we were out of there. The law forbids us from interfering in administrative matters. So these are administrative matters and I want to make sure that the administration was aware of what was happening. It seemed to me based from what I heard from Mr. West, they are, they are aware and what you heard is the official position of the city because we, we can't get involved. We're glad you all came, but we can't try and resolve. That's not what we can do. It, it has to be done through the administration.
Mr. Chair, can I speak on that?
Well-
Respond to that, I mean?
Where are we with time?
Yeah, I have a court.
Did you have one?
I didn't use all my time. It's just-
I guess we, well, what is your statement?
I just want to make it clear, the petition does not have anything to do with grievances. We have a grievance procedure which we follow in the contract, which we've been following in the contract, so that is, that is not correct. There are other things that is going on in this facility, the reason why we are asked that we have a, an investigation done at the wave transit system, just like it was done for the city employees.
Well, well, Mr. Maven, let me first say that public transportation is important and vital in Mobile and in our entire region. All of the successes that have just been articulated by Mr. West would not have been possible if it were not for employees. Twenty-four percent increase in ridership, that's a credit to each and every one of you who put on a uniform and who go out and provide the service with bus service each and every day. The administration is aware, they have a copy of your petition, they have a copy of, have you provided them a copy of your grievances?
No, because we have a grievance process. We wouldn't provide that information to the, the city. We only talking about the way we are being mistreated.
Well, that's why I want to get right in there. The, the issues that you have relative to mistreatment, have you provided that to the administration?
That's why we would like a private forum so we can sit down with them to express them what is going on or someone can come out to the transit system and speak to the employees.
Well, what, what we, what I was suggesting from a, from a council standpoint, we certainly have the ability to hear all that you said. I've had individual employees that I know very well, one in attendance today, that I have forwarded that information over to the administration. I'm not calling any names because I want to be respectful of the personnel processes and grievance processes, but the administration is here. I think they've heard your request for a private forum to discuss those matters outside of the grievance process and I'm hopeful that at some point, a forum will be provided to them, if that's a possibility. Mr. Chief of Staff?
Mr. President, we, we certainly hear you and we've expressed- Uh, Mr. President, we certainly hear you, and we've expressed the fact that we are going to be looking into this. I want to emphasize that, I hear Mr. Maven, he says the petition is completely separate from the grievances. I don't disbelieve that, but I'm not sure I would take that at face value. We do not want to impair the grievance process. That is a matter of collective bargaining. There are protections for the union under the collective bargaining agreement and the laws of the United States. We will do nothing to impair those rights. So I am short of telling you that we're going to have a private sit-down. I don't know if that is appropriate under the law. I can tell you, we'll be looking into it.
Well, I'm appreciative of that. We really won't know how far you will be able to engage until you have some semblance of the issues that they want to bring to bear. So if you could keep this council apprised to the degree that is permissible, that would be helpful.
Uh, one hundred percent to that, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Did you have something you want to say?
I'm just going to close mine out by saying, as a letter carrier, I represented, I worked for the US Postal Service for thirty-two years, seventeen of those years I was a letter carrier and I represented them with the union. When I moved up into management, I represented management. And working conditions, working conditions are part of a contract, a union contract, so that's, I feel like Mr. West, so if the issue is working, it's then with working conditions, that's a union issue, it's not a city issue. It's a union issue, and because I participated in that process, that is a union issue that workers are not being treated fair. It's not a city issue, it's a union issue.
I don't disagree with you, Councilman Richardson. My standpoint is that these individuals have taken off their jobs. Something is prompting...
Something is happening.
Something is prompting these individuals to take off their jobs and come down here. We don't have our public, our bus employees come down here every week. Something is prompting it, and if it's permissible, fine, if it's not, fine, and I think the administration is willing to investigate how far they can go into it and keep us surprised. That's all I'm expecting. But something is prompting these individuals to take time out of the middle of their morning. I agree. Well, Mr. Maven, I'm sorry, your time, I know your time has expired. Was that the commentary for all of you? Were you speaking for everybody?
Nope.
Wonderful, let's have the next speaker, please.
Robert Lambert.
Good morning.
Good morning.
To Mayor Stimson, the city council, and other officials here today, once again, good morning. My name is Robert Lambert the second, representing the Amalgamated Transit Union, Local seven seventy, as vice president. We are here today...
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
If you could give us your address for the...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I reside at sixty-eight twelve Overlook Road, Mobile, Alabama, three six six one eight.
Thank you.
We are here today to express some issues and concerns on behalf of our coworkers and members at the wave transit system. Within the past year, we, the employees of the wave transit system, have endured disrespectful comments, harassing in nature, which has caused morale to be very low. We have recently gathered a petition in hopes to bring these issues to your attention and not in a public setting. However, we have not heard from any city official in regards to this issue. Mr. Damon Dash is presently general manager at the wave transit system, representing First Transit Management. Under Mr. Dash's leadership, we have experienced disrespectful comments that are often sexual in nature, referring to his private lifestyle. This represents an intimidating atmosphere, because if we speak out against him, he threatens you with your job. We are tired of being threatened, we are tired of being harassed, tired of being intimidated, and now we are tired of being ignored. As city employees, we deserve to be heard. Please don't ignore us in hopes that this situation will simply die. Mr. Dash has low regard for wave transit employees and often insults our intelligence. Please, ma'am, please, sir, hear our cries for help. We were hired to serve the public. Please grant us the tools we need to perform our jobs with dignity, high morale, and respect. Mr. Mayor, City Council, we, the wave transit employees, also desire one mobile.
Ebony Simon.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Ebony Simon. I reside at sixteen oh five Forest Street, Mobile, Alabama, three six six oh five. The workers at the wave transit have the right to work in an environment free from harassment, intimidation, and disrespect. We demand to be treated with such. Mr. Dash does not have the skill set to manage the workers at the wave transit. Our union is our right, our voice is our right and our voice, and we are coming to say, there is a serious problem going on at the wave transit. And a grievance would not solve the issues that are going on. If not addressed, it could affect the workers' ability to appreciate what we do in serving the public. This is our job, this is our livelihood, and we, and where we spend most of our day, so please hear us out, help us.
Kendra Evans.
Good morning, my name is Kendra Evans. I reside at one nine five four Saint Stevens Road, Mobile, Alabama, three six six one seven. At to Mayor Stimson, to the esteemed city council members, ATU Local seven seven zero, other civic leaders and citizens of Mobile, I'm here, I'm not going to beat a dead horse, I'm going to move on to something else. They've already addressed the inappropriateness and the disrespect, the low morale. One of the things that you all should have noticed that came from the lack of this, the lack of respect and the low morale and the esteem that he is currently instilling in the employees, is the Senior Bowl Shuttle fiasco. I was personally the dispatcher that was asked to get drivers to work that event. The reason why it did not go as smoothly as it has gone in previous years is because workers are tired. They're tired of being mistreated, they're tired of being disrespected, they're tired of their voices being not heard, being silenced with threats such as, "I'm not worried about anything, you all have nothing on me because the city is happy with the numbers, so they're not going to do anything to me." How can someone work properly and thoroughly with these type of threats looming over your head on a daily basis? No one can function when you're afraid for your livelihood. Your functioning capacities are at an all-time low, along with your esteem. You're afraid. I have workers that say, when I call them for overtime, "I'm too scared, I'm going to get fired on my day off." No, I love you, Kendra, but I can't do it. What has happened? What has changed over the previous years when we could call and they were volunteering? The change is Damian Dash. I myself have gone through the process of him targeting different employees. If you don't think the way he feels you should think, if you don't act the way that he feels you should act, then you're considered as targeted. And I won't, I won't name anyone else, but I'll name an instance. I will put myself out there, however. I was targeted in a so-called random check for validity of my driver's license in September. They used a third-party company, they told me that my license was suspended, therefore I was terminated effective immediately according to the union contract. Of course, I disputed that because I knew that they weren't suspended. But because I am a union member, I went to my president, and he was present, I went to the DMV, got all the proper paperwork. They wanted to dispute the paperwork and say that it was not valid. How can you dispute the state paperwork versus a third party that uses the state? Simple, it is because they wanted me gone, because I will not sit down, they will not silence me, I will not do what they want me to do if it is not in the order in which it should be. Therefore, I'm asking the city council today to hear us, hear our cries. The fact that he's making these demeaning remarks, because I'm in dispatch, I hear and see and experience more of it than the drivers themselves. The things that he says about women, a lot of us are large, and as you can see, I'm a large woman, but to say that we're big, fat, and out of shape, I felt that to be offensive and degrading me as a woman. Because I love the skin that I'm in, and it has nothing to do with my ability to do my job, and I feel like that should be the key issue, your ability to perform your job, not that I look the way you want me to look, sound the way that you want me to sound, or act the way that you want me to act, but my work ethics. So again, I say to you, we need your help. We are your citizens, please help us. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Ma'am, sir. Thank all of you for coming down, and we appreciate you bringing this to our attention and the matter in which you've done it.
Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson?
I would just have this comment to say, I was moved by what I heard, and all of them mentioned one word. It was one word coming to all of their comments, disrespect. Disrespect jumped out in front of everything else they said. And I got one recommendation, leave your phone on. Talk is cheap. A record of it is a whole different matter. You can't come back and respond to me, I'm saying, I'm just telling you. You got a phone, turn it on.
Did you have something, Mr. Dash? Again, thank all of you for coming down today. We really appreciate it.
Ordnance is held over, thirty-eight zero zero three, ordinance to amend and restate chapter thirty-eight, article two of the city code, providing for the appointment and qualification of municipal judges.
Moved to hold over until February twenty-sixth?
Second.
Probably moved to second in a discussion. Absent in a discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Sixty-four zero zero four, oh, I'm sorry, I did have one other person for agenda item. Reggie Hill, regarding resolution zero eight one two two, zero eight one two four, zero eight one two five, thirty-eight zero zero three, and sixty zero nine three.
Uh, Mr. Williams?
If you would, if we could know what, which agenda item he's speaking on, there's so many of them, if we can track with him, and let's make sure we stick to it today.
Right, these are, um, zero eight one two two and one two four, one two five are the purchase orders, and sixty zero...
Yeah, I'm just asking if the speaker, as he switches from agenda item to agenda item, can keep us on track so we can stay focused. Thank you.
Okay.
As you make your presentation, if you could delineate which agenda item it is so that we can follow you. Yes, sir, Mr. Hill?
Mr. President, members of the council, in the absence of our mayor, to the administration, citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, good morning. Reggie Hill, one thousand seven Center Street. I'd like today, Mr. Chairman, to speak on zero eight dash one two two, one two four, one two five, three eight dash zero zero three, and six zero dash zero nine three, and I am sending my thoughts and prayers to the wave transit system, I hope that we can get this resolved. Regarding zero eight dash one two two, I would like to...
Oh, never mind, just, if you could keep your commentary to the items that you signed in to speak on.
I am.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Reclaiming that time.
No, no reclaiming.
Zero eight dash one two two, it says, the question I would like to ask is, will these cameras also record audio, or will this just include the visual footage when we have regular traffic stops that are made within the city?
Mr. Public Safety Director, I'd imagine that would be...
These are video only.
Okay, and what measures are we using to ensure that we can have audio recording as well?
Referring to the surveillance systems?
No, sir, we're still on zero eight dash one two two.
The fifty drive cams.
Is it just video, Mr. Public Safety Director?
We're trying to get on the specific...
Zero eight dash one two two. And I would like to reclaim my time in searching for an agenda item.
Mr. Chairman, if I could be a little more clear, this is not a time to investigate the administration on all things, and this agenda item is about a video system only. If it's about cost or about inflation, then that's, if it's fine or an argument against it, but to delve into the operations of the police department is not part of this opportunity that you have to speak on agenda items only.
I got you.
Mr. President, as much as I have respect and regard for the senior gentleman from District Four, I completely disagree. If we have something on the agenda item, this is the time when we discuss it. If it was not discussed in the pre-council meeting, or the information was not provided via the internet means, and I commend the city clerk and their department for always providing that information, if it's not there, we have to ask the questions here. What else can we ask them?
Well, it's, Mr. Our Public Safety Director, you've asked a question.
It's public works.
Do you have the...
The item he's asking about is a public works item, drive cameras.
Right.
With GPS.
And so will you all supply that answer to Mr. Hill, separate from this meeting?
And it can be via writing, it doesn't have to be discussing, I think you need time.
The answer is that drive cams do video and audio.
Okay, see, that's what I asked originally, then it was said it was just going to be video. So I think we all need that question to be asked so we can get some clarity.
Well, what's your next?
Moving on to zero eight dash one two four and one two five, and I'll put all of these bundles in one, I have three questions pertaining to this. Where would these cameras be located? We see that these are under surveillance, watch. What is the primary objective of even obtaining such, this equipment? And the last question of dealing with those two items, one two four and one two five, how beneficial has such equipment been in the past, specifically regarding gun violence prevention?
Well, Mr. Hill is asking his questions, if you all could provide those answers to him via email or letter, that would be appreciated.
Mr. President, may I request a time, praying that they may be able to provide that, because there's been plenty of times that I've come down here and asked for information, the administration said they would provide, and I've still yet to see any of that.
I don't have any charge over that, Mr. Hill. What is your last statement?
Okay, moving right along, I was pleased to hear that there'll be a layover today regarding municipal court. I wanted to ask, well, let me just say this, because I'm sure we won't probably get an answer. For some generations, you know, much is given, for some, much is expected, but right now, in our generation of human existence, I believe much is required. We can't continue to put Band-Aids over these cancers that are within our cities. I believe that with this now being laid over, we need to take the time to actually look at this agency. We saw where our governor has stated state of distress.
Mr. Hill, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
This has everything to do with...
Mr. Hill is making a statement about our municipal court, and that is out of place. If you would like to know about the specific item, you are more than happy to ask questions as you have in the past meetings, and I have explained that this ordinance, these two items that we are looking at are very specific, and that's all it is. If you want to ask questions related to the specifics of these ordinances, you are welcome to do so. But to start asking questions and getting into an argument about something that is not on this agenda and not in these two items, you are out of order.
Mr. President, I believe that you have to have two substantial sides to bring an argument to the table, and right now, what I'm speaking on is six zero dash zero nine three.
Hold one second. You are absolutely out of order. Now, if you can, where is your time?
Six zero dash nine three says establish the compensation of the... Six-zero dash nine-three says establish the compensation of the Mobile Municipal Court. That's regarding resources. That's what I was just speaking on.
Hold it, hold it. Now, I'm trying to be civil. Now, we outlined the rules for the meeting prior to you engaging. Where are we on time?
Two seconds.
So you have approximately about fifteen seconds to kind of wrap up what it is that you want to say about a specific...
Well, I would like to reclaim the time that was interrupted, Mr. President.
No, sir, that's a part of the engagement. What specific item would you like to close out on?
Speaking specifically to sixty dash zero-nine-three, in the pre-council meeting, it was not said if that would be laid over. Is that going to be laid over as well? Because that is dealing with compensation. Where I was going with the nine-hundred-million-dollar statement regarding the governor, the same way we're putting resources into this, and we have not solved the problem of the agency.
Your time has elapsed, Mr. Hill.
Will it be laid over? That was a question that was asked during my time.
Your time has elapsed, Mr. Hill.
That was asked during my time.
Your time has elapsed, Mr. Hill. We're going to move on to the other items of the agenda.
Will you provide an answer, or no?
I don't have an answer for you, Mr. Hill.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Sixty-four zero zero four and sixty-four zero zero five, a rezoning property located at twenty-nine eighty-nine Dolphin Street from B-two to L-B-two, and twenty-nine fifty-five Dolphin Street from B-two and L-B-two to L-B-two.
So moved.
Second.
The property moved to second. End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Admins passed.
CIP resolutions held over. Twenty-one one-two-one, authorized contract with ACOM Technical Services for St. Stevens Road Street Restoration, Surveying, and Preliminary Design.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second. End of discussion. I just want to say that I'm proud of this initiative. This is the second step that Councilman Richardson and I, and along with the administration, are endeavoring to move forward with in order to improve the St. Stevens Road thoroughfare. Historically, it has been an economic base for various communities throughout our city. It has faced and is facing some hard times. There are a lot of work that needs to take place in the St. Stevens Road area. This will complete the survey and preliminary design so that we can hopefully go out to seek both local, state, and federal resources in order to bring this community back to the degree that it needs to come. So this is a great item, and I'm appreciative of its, hopefully, potential passage on today.
Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson?
I'd like to join you in saying that this is open season now for the Transportation Alternative Grants. An applicant can receive up to two-hundred-thousand dollars for infrastructure work. This morning, I asked the administration to file an application for a TAP grant for St. Stevens Road. We're going to need all of the money we can get once we get through with the engineering part of it, when we come down to the construction part. We're going to need all of the money that we can get, including MPO. We're not running nobody off. We are busy in the western section of our country right now, widening streets. We want St. Stevens Road fixed, and we don't want no crybaby. War is me. If we found the money to go out west to fix those corridors, we want the money to fix St. Stevens Road like it ought to be. You can't find me one tree planted along St. Stevens Road, because people can pull over whenever they get ready. No curves, no gutters. We're talking about not no street. We're talking about U.S. Highway forty-five goes all the way to Chicago. And when it comes to Mobile, it has been neglected. We're not taking it anymore. We're standing up for St. Stevens Road. We're not going to stop until St. Stevens Road has been completely revitalized. That's our goal.
Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolutions held over. Sixty-zero-nine-three, establish the compensation for municipal court judges.
Moved to lay over till February twenty-sixth.
Second.
The property moved in second in the discussion. If not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I am with laid over.
Zero eight one-two-two, one-two-three, one-two-five, two-four, two-five, one-two-six, one-two-seven, one-two-eight, one-two-nine, approving purchase orders for Lynx Incorporated, E-Builder, J&R Systems Integrators, J&R Systems Integrators, Alabama Correctional Industries, Backby and Russell Electrical Company, SynTech Systems, Southern Lighting and Traffic Systems. Thirty-five one-thirty, authorization for assignment, assumption, and amendment of lease between Tech Lynx, the City of Mobile, and Greby LLC for office space located at four-fifty-five St. Louis Street for Cyber Division MPD. Sixty-one three-two and one-three-three, approved offering thirteen-fifty West Lamar Drive for sale, and twenty-three eighteen St. Stevens Road for sale. Sixty-one three-four, approved settlement agreement and release of claims, Doris Baker. Sixty-one three-eight, resolution appointing the Atchison Firm to provide legal... I'll take that one separate, I'm sorry.
So moved. Second.
The property moved in second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Admins passed.
Sixty-one three-eight, resolution appointing the Atchison Firm to provide legal services to the city council.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second. End of discussion.
Yes.
Ms. Rich?
Thank you. This will be read for the record, and I'll give a copy to the clerk's office. Thank you. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Wanda Cochran for her service to our council. Mrs. Cochran's opinions were always concise and always supported by case law. I appreciated her tenacity to defend our city's ordinances. She always displayed the utmost ethics, respect, and professionalism, excuse me, while serving as the council's legal representative. The contract before us today deals with Mrs. Cochran's replacement. The Atchison Firm appears to be the choice of this council as our next legal representation. I've expressed my reservations to this decision, and I will attempt to explain these concerns. The Atchison Firm, according to their website, represents the sheriff's office. This may represent a conflict of interest, since the council will be dealing with the police jurisdiction and annexation issues in the near future. Will the Atchison Firm need to recuse themselves when dealing with the sheriff's office regarding the PJ? I hope that is definitely looked into and crystal clear as we move forward with that issue. The Atchison Firm was also involved in a court case last October involving the mayor's lawsuit that he filed against our city council. As you recall, despite my objections for a special call meeting, since it went against the rules of council, that requires a one-week holdover on a new agenda item, a meeting was indeed held in spite of my planned absence. At that meeting, Mr. Atchison's Firm was hired to represent five council members in favor of settling the lawsuit the mayor bought against this council. Also, at the special call meeting, a twenty-twenty budget was passed. Mr. James Atchison stated to me it was not his opinion whether to hold the special call meeting. I was glad to get that clarified. It appears that the opinion to meet was written by the administration's legal team, as Ms. Cochran had left an opinion that said otherwise, and said that we could not meet on an agenda item that was already held over from the Tuesday before. Mrs. Cochran's opinion was ignored. Mr. Atchison also stated that the court brief he signed and was presented on behalf of five council members to settle the mayor's lawsuit was handed by him, by a council member. He couldn't recall who. He said the brief was not written by his firm. If his firm didn't write the brief, then who did? Was it attorneys representing the administration? I want the council's attorney to be independent of other branches of our municipal county and state governments. Finally, I was told by Mr. Atchison that while other members of his firm will be involved in rendering legal briefs and opinions, he will review all final legal work that the firm offers to this council. I am concerned about the added legal costs this additional layer of review may involve. It will be appropriate to monitor these costs closely, and the council may in the near future decide to perhaps hire an in-house attorney that would only be specific for council agenda items and council business. While it's important that the city council's legal representation have a good working relationship with the administration and their legal department, I do, however, strongly believe it's imperative to have a distinct separation of the various branches of government. I hope in the future the Atchison Firm will work independent of the administration when offering the council body their legal opinions. Those concerns that I have made known and stated to my colleagues make me very uncomfortable enough that I will be casting a no vote. Thank you.
Mr., is there any further discussion? Let me just say very briefly, hopefully, in response to my colleague's commentary, that I have absolutely no doubt in my mind that the firm that we've selected will have the ability to delineate between their relationships with any persons in the administration and their advocacy from a legal perspective of this council. I have had the opportunity to have engaged with them in a prior public service at the Mobile County Public School System, and they were the utmost professionals in providing their opinions and analysis from a legal perspective. They were engaged in the dismissal of the lawsuit filed by Mayor Simpson against this council, because the majority, a supermajority of this council, requested them to be engaged. They did what we asked them to do, because upon the advice of Ms. Wanda Cochran, her and the lawyers associated with our defense could not provide legal counsel. Yes, Ms. Cochran provided an opinion that said that we could not move forward. She provided that opinion after providing an initial opinion that said that we could. Concretely provided that opinion, because I asked her myself, this in hearsay, this in secondary, this in tertiary, this is me speaking directly with Ms. Cochran on every agenda item that we took up in that council meeting. A council meeting that Ms. Rich missed because she was on vacation. She was on vacation while we were here conducting the business of the City of Mobile, and we conducted it by a supermajority. So I'm ready to support, I support them. I wanted a firm. It didn't matter to me whether it was this firm or any other firm capable, competent, and qualified. And based on the persons who applied, based on what I feel we need as a body to do what we've been elected to do, I am wholeheartedly supporting this firm. And they have done nothing to deserve some of the commentary that has been exhibited and espoused here today. Any other commentary?
Mr. Chair, very briefly.
Ms. Gregory?
Thank you for those comments. I appreciate those. I, too, am very much in favor of hiring the Atchison Firm, and I feel very confident in what they bring to the table. As our president mentioned, having a firm working for us was something that many people on this council thought was a good idea, mainly because of the amount of legal work that we are producing these days. There is so much more going on, there's a lot of research, a lot of ordinances, just a lot more work than what has happened in the past when we had a one-person firm. So because of that need to do more and in a quicker fashion, we thought that a firm would probably serve us best, which is why the Atchison Firm is on the agenda today. A lot of the questions that have come up about conflicts of interest, relationships with the administration, those sorts of things, were all asked and answered during our interviews. So again, I think that we have a great firm standing by, ready to start working with us this afternoon, and I look forward to working with them in every capacity that we will need any legal team to help us with. And I just look forward to having Jim and Chris and the whole firm working with us and behind us.
Thank you. Ms. Gregory, any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Record item passes sixty-one, with the general lady from the sixth district in opposition.
Consent resolutions being introduced. Zero-three one-three-nine through sixty-one five-one.
Motion to suspend the rules for any consideration for consent resolution zero-three dash one-three-nine through six-zero-one, excuse me, six-zero dash one-five-one. Second.
Probably moved in second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Zero-three one-three-nine, we appoint Frank McMillian to the City of Mobile Citizens' Budget and Finance Advisory Committee. Zero-nine one-fourty, transfer monies from District Seven discretionary account to the Parks and Recreation Department for the Hillsdale Annual Mardi Gras Parade. Thirty-seven one-fourty-one, one-fourty-one, one-fourty-two, and one-fourty-three are recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a special events retail license for twenty-twenty Caligans St. Patrick's Day celebration, for issuance of a lounge retail liquor Class-One license for D-Spot Daiquiri and Grill on Highway ninety, and for issuance of a retail beer-table wine off-premises-only license for Dollar General Store on Three Notch Road. Thirty-seven one-fourty-six, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a restaurant-retail liquor license for Coin Dexter's on Oshel Road. Fifty-eight one-fourty-seven, authorized removal of Wheeze Group sixteen-oh-three. Sixty-one forty-eight and one-fourty-nine are approving and award a special bonus to the Officer of the Month and to the Firefighter of the Month. Sixty-one fifty, determine a donation to the League of Women Voters of Mobile for their annual Women's Centennial March serves a public purpose and approved payment. Sixty-one five-one, determine contribution to the Bayer Women's Coalition for the Trinity Gardens Annual Black Heritage Parade serves a public purpose and approved payment.
So moved.
Second.
The property moved in second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thirty-seven one-four-four and one-four-five are recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer-table wine off-premises-only license for Leon's Convenience Store and Leon's Package Store on Hockam Avenue.
Moved to lay over two weeks. Second.
Probably moved in second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
CIP resolutions being introduced. Twenty-one one-five-two through twenty-one one-five-three.
By council rule, these resolution will be laid over for one week.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, zero-eight one-five-four through twenty-one one-five-nine.
By council rule, these resolution will be laid over for one week.
Announcements. Mobile City Council will not meet next Tuesday. They will meet on next Wednesday due to the Mardi Gras holiday, regular time.
Madam City Clerk and members of the council, if on next Wednesday's meeting, we could move everything back an hour, it would be really helpful for me.
You want to do an afternoon?
That would be fine.
Anybody opposed an afternoon meeting?
About opposed afternoon meeting.
One o'clock, pre...
Well...
Two o'clock?
With one o'clock, what?
For what, pre-council?
Well, we could have pre-council at...
Have pre-council at one and...
And then council meeting.
Mr. President, I really need to check. I think we may have some public hearings advertised.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Well, just let us know, because maybe you can inform them.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Some of us can come here and hear the public meetings, you know, public hearings.
That's a good point.
If they don't want to move to the afternoon. Is that cool?
In order to, we have to have a quorum.
We have to have a quorum to do that.
We can have a quorum with... Yeah, we can have a quorum with.
I'll, I'll let you know.
Be here in the afternoon. We'll find out. We're always, Madam City Clerk. Announcements.
There's no reason.
Uh, Mrs. Rich?
Oh, thank you very much. First, I'd like to wish everybody a very happy and safe Mardi Gras. As the mayor said, the party is going to really start rocking. And I'd also like to thank Public Works, Public Safety, Revenue, all the city departments that interface with everybody who comes downtown to be part of that big event that we started. So I thank them for their past service the last couple of days or so and also the big time that's coming forward. Again, happy Mardi Gras, but keep it safe.
Thank you. Mister Richards?
Uh, thank you, Mister President. I would like to start off announcing that my District One Cryton Communion Meeting will be held this coming Thursday, uh, forward to twentieth at the Dumas Westlake Community Center, one-twenty-sixth Mobile Street, starting at six P.M. I'm asking all of our citizens in the Cryton area, please come out. I know it's a Mardi Gras night. Uh, but we have important issues to discuss and I really want to hear from you. This is your time to tell me what's on your heart and what's on your mind. We're going to start at six o'clock. I have invited representatives from Oster to come by and talk about employment opportunities. I've invited representatives from the Amazon Distribution Center to come and talk about the same thing. But I invite Bishop State Representatives to come to talk about workforce readiness, getting you prepared for jobs. I'm, I'm, I'm real interested in this lineman course for Alabama Power Company. You can come to Bishop State, I believe it's ten weeks. After ten weeks, you are through. You can go to work for Alabama, Alabama Power Company or any of these utility companies as a lineman. So they're going to bring all that information with them. Some of these courses, you don't have to pay anything and they have other courses that they'll pay you to come and take the course. So I don't know, I don't know, there should not be an excuse. If you don't have the job you want, then get the training necessary for you to get the job that you want to. We're going to have all that information ready and available when you come Thursday night, Dumas Westlake Center at six o'clock. Well, today, we're blessed to have Ms. Chelsea Douglas. Would you stand, Chelsea? She is with Senator Doug Jones' office. She was born in Clark County. She is a U.S.A. graduate. She will probably start coming to our meetings on a regular basis because she and Senator Doug Jones are interested in what's going on in City Hall. And she is here to report back as to what we're doing. We're glad to have you come. I've met her before. Glad to have you with, with us today. We are still, this is, this is still Black History Month and I want to close out with, with a word on black history. It was James Weldon Johnson who wrote, "Lift Every Forest We Consider To Be The Black National Anthem." And in his last verse, he left some words for us. He said, "Stony the road we trod, bird of chestnut wrought felt in the days when hope unborn had died yet with the steady beat have not our weary feet. Come to the place for which our fathers sired. We have come over way with our tears we have watered. We have come treading the path through the blood of this slaughter, but out from this gloomy pass till we stand now at last under the white gleam that our bright star has cast." James Weldon Johnson. But I'll close out with Frederick Douglass. "My name say, who says, 'Those who favors freedom,' and yet deprecate agitation alike those who want fine crops but they don't want to plow the ground. They want rain but they don't want lightning and thunder. They want that ocean but not the roar of its mighty waves. That man may not get all that he pays for in this world, but you must say they paid for all that you get." That's it for me, Mister President.
Yes, sir.
Mister Richards?
Mister Davis?
Thank you, sir. Uh, I see we have Mister Nick Matranga, our Mobile County License Commissioner with us today. It's good to have you with us, Mister Matranga.
You said all you do.
And his, his presence here reminds me of an item I've been wanting to mention for several months now. And that is if your driver's license doesn't have a gold star on it, you may not be able to use it to get past the TSA checkpoints at the Mobile Airport or any other airport later on in this year. The Real ID Act is a federal law passed by Congress after nine eleven that establishes specific federal requirements for state-issued driver's license and identity cards to be accepted for certain federal purposes like entering a federal building or boarding a domestic airline flight. Beginning, excuse me, beginning October first of this year, every air traveler eighteen years of age and older will need a Real ID compliant driver's license or another acceptable form like your passport of ID to fly within the United States. So beginning October first of this year, if you want to get on an airplane, you're going to have to either have a passport or have your driver's license, Real ID compliant with the gold star. Now, you can't go out to Mister Matranga's office to get this done. They don't do it there. You got to go to the, to the state driver's license office, which is Demetropolis, is that right?
Yeah.
Which is out on Demetropolis. You want to make an appointment, don't you, before you go out there? So I'm just warning you because I know what's going to happen October first. We're going to have a lot of people out at the airport trying to get on airplanes that can't get on airplanes. So please go ahead and take care of that. That's all.
Mister Davis, does it cost to have that driver's license redone?
It does. It, thirty-two dollars.
In addition, I mean, if you've already gotten one and.
It doesn't make any difference.
Mister Davis, uh, Joe, can you take your, your passport and that would serve as ID necessary to get the star? Instead of trying to get your birth certificate where your mama was born? Can you take your, can you take your?
To fly.
Passport?
Not, not, no. You mean out to the, out to Demetropolis? I don't know about that.
Yes.
Wait a minute.
Mister.
Okay.
I, I have a question though. If your, if your license is to be renewed under, you know, your calendar time, will you automatically get a star if you present the information at the same time? No.
No.
So no matter what, you have to come in for the extra?
Got to go to Demetropolis.
Okay.
Well, Mister Davis, thank you for that public service announcement. And I think we need to continue to make it as we get closer to the deadline.
And I don't know if we have any media.
Oh, yeah, you got Steve Alexander.
It'd be great if y'all would mention this.
Thank you, Steve, and all of y'all do. Mister Matt? Thank you.
John Shaw?
John Shaw? My buddy John, Dale's gone. He'll get the word out.
So, Mister President?
Yes, sir.
Why, why we going to send everybody to Demetropolis?
Turn it back on, Steve, real quick.
Way out west. What about the east side of the city? What about citizens on the east side of the city? Two hundred thousand, we got one hundred thousand citizens on the east side and we got to go way to Demetropolis, almost in the county to get our, our star, our driver's license. But he, but he has no business coming. I'm complaining. He's here.
That, that's, that's right. Is that it, Mister Davis? You know I can't, you know.
I know.
You want to hear Steve? Mister Alexander, what, what did you have to say? Joe said you had something. All right. Oh, my goodness. Does not wake up.
Did you have some information to add to this? Are you just?
Right.
Yeah.
I did get one. I think it was thirty-two dollars and I believe by October you have got to have it.
Right, October first.
That's right.
You cannot fly and probably do some other things. So that's very good advice.
Can't go in the federal courthouse?
Right.
Very, we're getting a lot of questions.
Wonderful. Well, thank you. Any assistance you can provide to help put the word out, we would appreciate it. Right. Yes, no problem. Thank you. Mister Vice President?
Uh, thank you, Mister President. I'd like to thank the Ms. Salter at B.C. Rain High School and the students for inviting me out on last week, last Wednesday to their presentation, "Dress to Success." It was a great attendance program that they had on last week and it was a pleasure to go and speak to kids, to tell them and encourage them to dress for success because you never know what success may be and you are always, we be prepared for it if you dress for it. Again, I'd like to thank Ms. Salter and the LBLA for inviting me out on last week. And also this coming Friday, I will be at the Gill Yard Elementary School for their annual Mardi Gras Parade, which is located inside their parking lot. The parade will start at one o'clock P.M. And again, looking forward this coming Friday to join Gill Yard. They celebrate Mardi Gras. And to all the citizens of District Three and to the City of Mobile, I wish you a happy and safe Mardi Gras. Thank you, Mister President.
Thank you, Mister Vice President. Miss, Miss Gregory?
Thank you, Mister President. This Friday, the Hillsdale Recreation Center will hold its annual Mardi Gras Parade around the center. Uh, it starts at ten o'clock and I will be there. Look forward to that every year. Then on Saturday, I will be the grand marshal for the Knights of Mobile. Uh, that parade begins at twelve-thirty. So looking forward to that and seeing all the folks along the parade route.
Thank you. That all sounds great. Mister Williams?
Thank you very much. I'll just be brief in saying that I will not be in town for Mardi Gras for the first time in maybe fourteen years. But who's counting? I'm going to be in Oklahoma, visiting my son Luke in the Marine Corps and I will not be answering emails or phone calls during that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Williams, and hope you have a safe travel and a great trip with your son.
Thank you.
I want to thank Pastor Sandy McQueen and the Tru Van Baptist Church. We hosted our inaugural District Two pastors' luncheon, ministers' luncheon on last Thursday. It was great, sumptuous meal, great attendance. And we plotted an agenda that hopefully we will be able to deploy relative to the census and things of that nature that are vitally important to our community. And I appreciate, I'm appreciative of our moderator, Moderator Fraser of the Revelation Baptist Church, who was with us on last Thursday. There are a lot of great things happening here in the City of Mobile. Great things, but can really translate to even greater ones, particularly in District Two. So I'm excited about our future and appreciative of this opportunity to serve. Happy Mardi Gras to all of you. Enjoy it. Let's have a good time. Let's be respectful of our laws. I was in New Orleans over the weekend and saw some of the differences between ours and theirs and I think we have the greatest thing going and hope everyone has a great and festive time. That, is there a second? We probably moved a second. That we would adjourn this meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The meeting is adjourned.